Good evening. And welcome candidates, you who are in the audience and those viewing at home. As a courtesy to all present, please silence your cellphones. This is the primary race candidate forum for the Democratic nomination for Johnson County Board of Supervisors. All candidates tonight are members of the Democratic Party. The race for the two Republican positions on the ballot is uncontested. I'm Susan Craig, member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be the moderator for this evening's forum. The forum is being livestreamed on the League's Facebook page. It is also being filmed for rebroadcast on the three public education and government channels in Iowa City, Corleville, and North Liberty. Please check those websites for scheduling. Additional information about candidates may be found on the League's vote411.org website. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate, which is why we have a policy that campaign literature is welcome outside this room following the forum. But no buttons, signs, or literature can be worn or distributed inside this room. The League does take positions, excuse me, after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age and older. Join us. We can use your time, your talent, and your financial support. League members advocate and inform voters: Democracy works best when more people are involved. Find us at www.lwvjc.org. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them, starting with one from the League, followed by one submitted on cards by you in the audience. League members are distributing cards and pencils for you to write questions on. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Hold up the cards, and a League member will collect them throughout the forum and bring them to me to read. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum or at another time. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Due to the timeframe, there will not be time for rebuttals. Near the end of the scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will be rotated throughout the evening. Kiran Patel, a League member, is our timekeeper tonight, using cards to alert candidates when time is about up and when it is up. We have three candidates running for two seats on the November ballot for a four-year term. John Green, Lone Tree Democrat, is an incumbent on the board and seeking reelection. V. Fixmir O'Reeze, is that right?
Arise.
Arise. I even asked somebody how to say it. Iowa City, is from Iowa City, and Seth Zimmerman from Solon are seeking positions on the Democratic ballot. Two of the three candidates will advance to the general election in November. Audience members, please write your questions on the cards provided and pass them to League members, who will advance them to the moderator. Let's get started with opening statements. Please speak directly into the microphone. We've got one person on Zoom, so you can be heard here and over the television broadcast. Let's begin with your two-minute opening statements, starting with V. Fixmir O'Reeze.
Thank you. And first of all, I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting these forums. It's really voter engagement and information sharing is the bedrock of democracy, so thank you for that. Thank you for all the audience members here in the room and those at home. Hello to my children and my wife who couldn't be here, and thank you to my colleagues. My name is V. Fixmir O'Arise, and I am a Democrat running for Johnson County Board of Supervisors. My pronouns are "they," "them," and I actually grew up in a military family. My dad was in the Navy, and my mom immigrated here from the Philippines when she was nine years old, along with her sister and my grandmother. So we moved around a lot as a kid, and so I'm always, I'm kind of used to being the new kid, no matter where I go. And about 10 years ago, my wife got a position at the University of Iowa and is faculty here. I actually received my master's degree in urban and regional planning from the University of Iowa, particularly focused on land use planning. Out of that, I directly started working in watershed planning, and about seven years ago, we decided to start a young family here in Iowa. And as a queer, LGBTQ, non-gender conforming transgender person, I feel as though that's a real act of love and resistance in this state. And I also own my own business, so I own my own planning firm. It's an environmental community planning firm, and we are focused on climate change impacts and social and racial justice. And why I'm running is because I think that these last two and a half years have really shown us that there are a lot of widening cracks in our social safety nets, and it is unacceptable. We need to do better. We need to do lessons learned, and as a planner, I have the training, experience, and passion to carry that forward. I also have a propensity for calling people in to do the work, as opposed to just calling people out for what they're doing or not doing. And that's something that I think that will help the board, and I'm excited to hopefully get that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, John Green, who is participating tonight via Zoom.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity tonight. My name is John Green, and I'm running for a full-term supervisor to continue and broaden the work I've begun over the past 10 months. Everything that was important a year ago during the special election remains important today. As we've seen, including by my participation via video link tonight, while some of us may be done with the pandemic, it isn't done with us. Both data and anecdote indicate the coronavirus is on an upward swing locally again. The Board of Supervisors must continue to empower public health to respond diligently and quickly to changing circumstances. Johnson County is also in the early stage of dispersing our $28.4 million American Rescue Plan Act funds. While the Board approved a list of projects last year, it will take an explicit effort over the coming years to ensure design and execution of these projects focus not just on the individual line items but more broadly incorporate equity and county capacity building at every turn. The Board also needs to keep focused on the important work of adding affordable housing here in Johnson County, balancing against sprawl and the destruction of the remaining sensitive habitats we enjoy here. According to MIT, the living wage in Johnson County is currently $13.68 for a two-income household with no children, and it only goes up from there if one adult isn't working or if kids are present. There's a lot to be done, including myriad day-to-day responsibilities as a supervisor, such as locking in the accessibility gains made over the pandemic, ensuring oversight of county departments and budgets, and telling our story. It is a good story to tell, but we must work together to ensure it's a better story in the coming years. We have such potential, and I hope to have the opportunity to ensure that we reach it in 2025 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth Zimmerman is up next.
Good evening. My name is Seth Zimmerman, and I'm running for Johnson County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for conducting these forums and for all that they do to engage people in the political process. Johnson County has been my home since 1974, and I am grateful to the community that helped shape who I am today. I am a proud father of three thoughtful, smart, kind children who amaze me with their decency on the daily. I'm a husband to a beautiful, talented, and truly remarkable woman who works harder than anyone I have ever known. Together, we all live on a farm south of Solon, in a home that we designed and built ourselves using as many principles of sustainability as we could. Together and with the help and support of friends and community, we have built a small business called Get Fresh in Iowa City, starting at the Iowa City Farmer's Market, where we would buy local produce and turn it into juice right in front of patrons on Washington We know the importance of small businesses supporting small businesses and local producers. For the last 21, two years, I've worked in the environmental field at the State Hygienic Lab and Lynn County Public Health, monitoring water and air quality to keep the public safe and to determine ways we may help to improve the environment. My passion for protecting the environment doesn't stop when I leave work. I have volunteered for Borough Land Trust, lent them my goat herd for timber stand improvement projects, and was fortunate enough to serve on their board. I've also been involved in Project Aware, a river cleanup involving 300 to 400 volunteers every year, where we go to a different water body and clean it up, remove the garbage from the stream. To date, we have removed 918,000 pounds of garbage from Iowa's waterways. Truly a large lift from an incredible group of people. I'm excited to join Johnson County Board of Supervisors and start doing the heavy lifting of moving Johnson County forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the first question is from the League of Women Voters. Johnson County, according to recent census data, has grown by 16.8%. Much of that growth has occurred in smaller communities like Tiffin and North Liberty. What does this growth pattern mean for county services in the future? We'll start this question with John Green and then just go down the line.
Thank you. Johnson County is the second fastest-growing county in the state of Iowa, and a lot of that is in our smaller municipalities, but it is not shared amongst those municipalities. Tiffin and Solon and North Liberty are growing very quickly, where other communities, such as Lone Tree down where I'm at, are not growing nearly as quickly and not enjoying the influx of folks coming to live with us and be our neighbors. We need to ensure, as a county, and this is one of the exciting things about the American Rescue Plan Act allocation we've received, that the county builds the capacity to do this work and to be a partner to some of our smaller municipalities. As a former mayor of Lone Tree, I know very well how difficult it is for smaller towns to pull off these bigger infrastructure projects, and so I'm glad that the county is working to move in that direction. We need to continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am currently a resident in Solon. I've been there pretty much my whole life, and I completely agree that we have to watch out for and support the outlying communities. I feel that there's been a feeling that there's a divide between rural and city interests, and I'm interested in being the bridge between that divide. I'm interested in bringing people together, coming up with solutions. I am heartened by the fact that the current County Board of Supervisors has approved a position to move forward in that vein, and we just have to keep working together to make sure that everyone is represented. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a really great question, and you know, we really want to make sure that we're looking at those fringe area agreements, and that the county is doing all that it can to make sure that the infrastructure is available and being utilized close to the towns and cities that are nearby. And in terms of, you know, which cities those are, Johnson County has an amazing, rich resource of, you know, jobs and natural resources, and so of course, we're going to be seeing a lot of growth and interest in our towns. And I think that we need to support them as much as possible and make sure that as they are growing, they're doing so in a responsible way, so that we can protect our natural resources and make sure that, you know, the infrastructure that's in place isn't overburdening the residents that are there or future residents to come.
Thank you. Okay, question number two, and this one, we'll start with Seth Zimmerman. Was the Board of Supervisors correct to not give preference to excluded workers in distributing ARPA money?
I believe the Board can be proud of the position they took. I know it was a divided vote, and there was much debate over which way to go on this. I think everybody can be proud that they live in a community that has stepped forward and supported people who are disenfranchised and have not received the supports they need over the years. It's not my position to question the current Board. I will move forward in my role and make the best decision I can based on the information provided me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, you know, this really speaks to a lot of the trauma that we've experienced with COVID. Here, we had two years of trauma. We lost family members. We saw those social safety nets entirely leave communities behind. It is unacceptable. And then our leaders were asked, you know, to have millions of dollars come through our community. And so I have a lot of compassion and empathy for anybody in a leadership position that have that kind of influx of funding come into the community, because of course, it needed to be spent, it needs to be spent here, and we need to be providing resources to folks in the short term and long term. So I think that in terms of direct funds, we do need to have direct aid to folks, and I'm very proud that Johnson County is the only county in the state that did that. Can we be doing more? Absolutely. And we need to be thinking long term. As a planner in environmental community planning, I know climate change is here, and we are looking at compounded disasters in the future, such as COVID, such as flood, and such as derachio, so we need to be prepared.
Thank you. Okay, the next question.
Thank you.
Oh, John, sorry, you're not in the room. I forgot about you.
No problem. I understand the difficulties with these hybrid meetings, but I think that they're worth it. In terms of the Direct Assistance Program versus an Excluded Workers Fund, I did forcefully advocate for an Excluded Workers Fund. I have no doubt that everyone in Johnson County who receives a $1,400 stabilization check is going to be better off for it, and they're going to make our county better for having those resources, for maybe pulling them back from the brink. But I fought for the program that I thought was the better program. That being said, I do also want to underline that the Supervisors increased funding to the county's general assistance program, which can really be a lifeline for folks in immediate stress, and I'm glad that we got that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, I'm combining a couple here that deal with affordable housing. What specific plan for affordable housing in Johnson County would you support, and how would you bring pertinent groups together? And the other question was very similar, ensuring, how do you plan to ensure the expansion of affordable housing in the county? And this time, we will start with V. Fixmir O'Reeze.
Yeah, I'm actually the vice president of the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition, and affordable housing is something I'm very passionate about. And also, as a small business owner, I know that our workforce development is crucial to have affordable housing. And when I say affordable, I mean, we need to have housing where people can live and work and have their children go to the same schools, so that they're not driving in and out of town. That's how you, you know, empower local citizenry, is to have people living and working where they are. I would really love to see more focus on our fringe area agreements and seeing how we can work with developers and with cities to make sure that we have more options. And I think that across the board, we can start looking potentially at different types of development, where we can have, you know, our mobile homes are protected, so that people who are living and owning their mobile home homes aren't looking at rent increases, you know, that four or five times what it should be. And so I think that we need to protect the affordable housing that we have here, and we need to look at other solutions.
Thank you. John Green.
Thank you. Yeah, we do have a dearth of affordable housing in this county. We need to build more. We need to build intelligently. We need to frankly focus on more attainable price points. When you look at the building permit data from last year, the average for new housing construction permits in Johnson County was nearing $1 million, and that is not going to help out the folks who need help, because V is absolutely right. This is something that impacts our workforce. You know, I'm from Wyoming. Teton County, Wyoming, is the most expensive county in the country, and it's just heartbreaking to see what they're going through, where you have people who have to commute two hours at 70 miles an hour to get to work. And we're going to see that here if we don't continue working to get out ahead of it. V is also right that we need to work with our municipal partners, but the fringe area agreements are a sticky thing as a former mayor. I recognize that, too. Thank you.
Seth Zimmerman.
I think we need to recognize that there is a crisis in Johnson County as far as affordable housing, and that ripples through the entire economy in Johnson County. It's the workforce, it's access to food, it's everything. So I think we do need to work hard on coming up with solutions, and I think one thing that as we move forward, we really have to think about is keeping people near the services that everybody needs. There are situations where people don't have cars to travel, to grocery stores, doctors, things like that, and so we need to make sure that people are afforded housing in places where they can get the services that they require.
Thank you. Okay. Question four, and this time, we'll start with John Green. If you had to narrow it down, what would you say are the three most important functions of a county board of supervisors?
Thank you. So three of them, all right. Oversight, which means policy, personnel, budget, and objectives. The Board is directly responsible for a bunch of county departments where there are not elected sitting at the top of those departments, secondary roads, public health, IT, HR, all that sort of thing. So that's item one. Item two is with this once-in-a-generation opportunity with the ARPA funds, the $29.4 million from the American Rescue Plan, we need to ensure that the projects that we do with those dollars are good generational projects that also have other throw-off benefits to Johnson County in terms of capacity building and whatnot. And number three is, we need to be an example for other counties, municipalities throughout the state, and a pushback against the Republicans in the state legislature. Thank you.
Yeah, so as I see it, the three most important things that the Board of Supervisors can do is maintain a message of unity, working together to solve the big problems in our community. They don't have the scope to deal with all of the problems in the county, but if we try to keep the county moving forward with positive message and try to attack the problems head-on and deal with things, even if they seem sometimes insurmountable, I think we can move the ball forward. Additionally, they deal with oversight of the budget, which is always critical, being fiscally responsible and dealing with what you can within your realm, and then supporting community organizations is another thing. Bringing, excuse me, bringing organizations together that are already doing great work in the community and organizing them together so that they can lift more. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that really, when we're looking at what the county supervisors are responsible for, so there's 550 employees, it's $130 million budget, you know, there is oversight that needs to happen. You know, it's the not sexy things. It's the roads and the taxes and the things that you don't really think about, the auditor and things like that, so that we are responsible for that, for the taking care and managing of our staff and, of course, taking care of the Johnson County budget. And then I think furthermore, it is incumbent upon supervisors to make sure that we are being inclusive. That really has an impact on how people arrive at the work that they do, and when people walk in that door at the county building to get, you know, a permit for a commercial kitchen or some sort of licensure, they need to feel like they are going to be respected and taken care of in a way that upholds their dignity, and so we need to do the work to do that. And I also think that we are, you know, doing the human services work as well. We are taking care of people, and we are supporting organizations that also take care of people. There's a lot of people, 160,000 people in Johnson County, so I look forward to that. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Does Johnson County need militarized vehicles like MRAP or Bearcat to safely police Johnson County? And this question will start with Seth Zimmerman.
The needs of protecting the community of Johnson County, I think, fall to the Sheriff's Department and Brad Kunkel and his crew. If, as time goes by, there are more and more gun-related crimes in our community, if Brad sees something like that as something he needs to properly do his job and protect his staff, then I'm not going to go against his wishes. I do think that we have to think about the cost structure. Right now, we have a tool that can be used for pulling trees off the road, getting people out of mosquito flats if it's flooded, all kinds of search and rescue things. I don't see a point in getting rid of it. I think we allow Brad to do his job as he sees fit.
No, I mean, obviously, the sheriff is, you know, an elected official, and he has to answer for the choices that he makes. But no, I would not support further, you know, purchasing of militarized vehicles. I believe that it is a complex issue. We certainly, in Iowa in particular, have citizens who are armed to the teeth, and so how do we deal with that? We have extremely lax gun laws, and so, you know, when we're looking at this issue, the other side of that, too, is that we need to have a democracy where people can take to the streets and protest and say, you know, when their rights are being trampled on without fear of a militarized vehicle arriving on the scene. And so if you're purchasing militarized vehicle, I guess the question is, are we at war with our citizenry? And that's certainly not the case. So I would not support that. I think that, you know, the sheriff obviously is an elected official. I do think that it's important to have trusted relationships, and I think that we need to work on those relationships, and so I would hope that I could bridge that relationship with him.
Thank you. John Green.
Thank you. You know, I ran on this 10 months ago, that we don't need militarized equipment in our domestic law enforcement agencies. You know, this was after my partner got tear gassed out at the Dubuque Street Bridge over Interstate 80 a couple summers ago. This is not how we want to interact with our public. This is not how we want to interact with the people that we report to serve. I'm glad that the Board of Supervisors denied Sheriff Kunkel's request for money to purchase a Bearcat last year in the budget session. And quite frankly, I wish that he would get rid of the MRAP, which is left over from his predecessor. But we'll continue working together to find ways forward that both preserve the safety of the community and the public safety officers working for that community.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. Are there plans in the Johnson County, and there's an abbreviation here I'm not sure of, long-range plan, agenda, for a county-wide transportation system for all those who cannot drive? And this time, we'll be starting with V. Fixmir O'Reeze.
You know, I think connectivity and mobility are a huge opportunity in Johnson County. You know, we have rural residents who can't, we saw during the pandemic, we're having problems getting to their very important medical appointments or getting groceries. And so we saw our, you know, seats delivering groceries. I mean, we saw that, you know, we had to change what we were doing, and I would absolutely support a county-wide transportation plan. I think that it is imperative, when you think about resilience and recovery, when you're looking at compounded disasters or just disruptions, that everybody have equal access to get to the necessities that they need, whether that's to go to school, pick up their children, check on their parents or grandparents. So yeah, I would absolutely love to see a transportation plan that came about, where we could work together in the cities and in the county areas, unincorporated areas, to make that happen. It is absolutely necessary, yeah.
John Green.
Thank you. Yeah, we are doing a bunch of important work here. As V pointed out, seats does a lot of good work, has done a lot of work throughout the pandemic, not just helping people access groceries and medical appointments, but also helping out at the county administration building. But one of the difficult things here is the reality is we're working with a bunch of different municipalities and private partner organizations. Just to give one example, the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County has been working on revitalizing the Crandick Corridor from Iowa City up to potentially Cedar Rapids. And when you look at the historical benefits there and the potential there, it's great. But then Crandick is a privately held concern, and we've got to deal with all of the individual municipalities that we're going through. There is excellent promise there, but it's going to require a lot of hard work and a lot of collaboration.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear that in everything we do in this community, if we do it together, we're going to do a better job of supporting people. I completely agree with V that connectivity and the access for everybody to have the ability to find affordable transportation to get to the needs within their community is critical. I would I would completely support trying to bring these groups together, to work together, to move all the citizenry, citizenry, and kind of get past some of those lines that we draw in our community.
Thank you. We have time for one more question. Why are you the best candidate for the office you are seeking? And we will start with John Green.
Thank you. I think that all three of us bring strengths to this position, and I don't want to put the other candidates in a position of feeling like we need to drag one another down. One of the reasons that Johnson County has five supervisors is because we need a diversity of experience, of demographics, of vision. That being said, I hope that the past 10 months of my service and the vision that I'm articulating for a full four-year term indicate and illustrate that I've been thinking hard about the problems and challenges that face us, about the opportunities that we have, if we can come together to seize them. And so I hope that voters in Johnson County agree, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue debating with my fellow candidates. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that I am the best candidate for Johnson County Board of Supervisor because I am fully rooted in Johnson County. I have been working for the community of Johnson County since I was a very, very young man, and I will continue to work to support families, to support businesses, and to support economic development. I feel that having kids in the school districts, I have some skin in the game, I need to make this work, I need to make this county the best possible place I can, so I will work every day to make this county the best possible county. Thanks for your support.
Yes, thank you. We are very fortunate in Johnson County to have people who are passionate and brilliant and smart, and so I hope I get that opportunity to serve. And, you know, one of the reasons why I think I am really equipped to step into this role is because as a certified professional planner, who has worked in climate change impacts and flood resilience and, you know, racial and social justice, I believe I have the training and expertise and the passion for what needs to really bring us forward as a county. And I also have a fresh perspective. You know, I, as a queer, transgendered, biracial person, bring a very different perspective. I know what it feels like to be left out, I know what it feels like to not have my voice at the table, and I bring that into everything that I do because I want to serve the people that are most vulnerable, those that don't have a voice in the room but are also really impacted by the decisions that are made. But I really want to bring, you know, a lot of the passion and creativity to this position if elected, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to closing statements. Maybe that last question was a little bit like your closing statement, but you get two more minutes, and we'll start this one with Seth.
Okay. Well, I just want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters, and I want to thank everybody in this room and everybody that's watching for engaging in the process. It is so important, so important that we all do our civic duty and get out and vote this season. It is so important, you just have to move forward. We've had several elections that have been decided by a carload of people would have changed the course of an election, so get out there, bring your friends, fill up your car, go out and vote, do your duty. I'd like to say, as we move forward in this election cycle and beyond, I'm grateful to Johnson County for all that they've done for me, and moving forward, I want to serve you. I'll be moving around the county, going out and doing meet and greets throughout the county, trying to talk to as many people as I can in the city and in the rural communities, and try to find out what's important to them. If you know of someplace that I should be, someplace I should go, someone I should talk to, please reach out to me. I can be reached at sethfor, seth@seth, the number for supervisor dot com, or Seth Zimmerman for Johnson County Supervisor on Facebook. Send me a message, send me an email, let me know what you need from me, I'm here to serve you. For more informa, get out, oh, sorry. I humbly ask for your vote June 7th or earlier. Early voting starts May 18th. Please get out and vote, there are satellite locations, you can go to the auditor's office for more information. Thank you.
V.
Yeah, yes, I really want to thank the League of Women Voters and as, for everybody here in the room and also those watching at home. Thank you for being engaged and, and really wanting to hear from us. I just love how involved Johnson County residents are. It's always an amazing opportunity to see what passions you have and what questions you have for us, so thank you. You know, we discussed a lot of issues tonight, and I hope that you have a pretty good sense of who we are, and if you have other questions, if you would like to reach out to me, I'm at electvfo.com, and on that website, you'll, you'll see some more information about my platform, you'll see where I'm going to be at. I also have a newsletter called the Weekly Update, I mean, you got to have some fun, right? And, you know, so you'll be able to connect with me that way, and of course, on social media, all the, the interwebs. But, you know, I, I really want the opportunity to serve this community because I believe, not only do I have the skills and the passion, but I believe in you, I believe in us. I think that we've been through a whole heck of a lot of hard things lately, but we need hope, and we need to be planning for the future. I have that experience, but I also need to hear from everybody here in the room and everybody in Johnson County. I think that we talk a lot about urban or rural divides, and there is some of that, certainly, but I think that when you really look at it, when you really ask people, what are they concerned about? They want what's, something better for, for their kids or grandkids, they want access to affordable housing, they, they want to make sure that, you know, they get to have their Friday night football, or they get to, you know, have friends and family that they care and love about, and love. And so I think that that's one of the things that really pushes me forward with Johnson County, is that I really believe that we can do this, and we deserve this. So I hope that you vote for me, I humbly ask for your vote. I, I think that we can be an inclusive, resilient Johnson County because we care, so thank you.
And John Green.
Thank you, and I would like to echo Seth and V. in thanking the League of Women Voters for organizing tonight's forum, as well as your flexibility on short notice to offer the hybrid format so that we can keep one another safe as, as this pandemic continues to scramble so many of our plans, but a free and frank exchange of ideas is instrumental to informing voters ahead of the primary on June 7th. And I also want to thank my fellow candidates. Tonight was the first time the three of us had come together to make our case and to hear from one another. I appreciated hearing your ideas and want to thank both V. and Seth for their contributions in the past, in the present, and in the future to Johnson County and to all of us as Iowans. Crises precipitate change, it is been said, and the pandemic is no different from any other epochal shift. With the infusion of American Rescue Plan funds, we're challenged by soaring inequality and inflation. With an outpouring of demands for racial justice, we face now a direct threat on women's bodily autonomy. Today, on uncomfortably warm and breezy day, perhaps we've all seen enough to take meaningful action on climate. There, these are but a few of the choices before us. I think I've shown in my time in office, as well as through forums such as this, that I am capable of the myriad challenges and opportunities facing us, and I hope that you agree. Thank you for your time tonight, have a wonderful evening. Please don't forget to vote on June 7th, and I hope that one of those two votes is for me, John Green. Thank you.
Thank you to all our candidates, to those of you in attendance and those watching at home, the senior center staff, and the staff of our local television station for making this videocast and live streaming possible. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and that sponsorship of the forum, forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Remember to vote in the primary on or before June 7th, and we can help you register to vote if you need that. Good night.[1772.73] [applause]